Okay, great. We let's call it to order then, our staff review meeting. It is 6:02 PM on March 18th, 2021. Present, we have Jake Pearson, Sue Wilson, Lisa Milkovich, Travis Nay, Ned Hacker. Jeremy Lowry is here, but might be maybe in and out based on his coverage reception. And I am Maren Patterson. From staff, I know we had Zachary Smallwood and-
Jared will be on in just a little bit.
Hey, perfect. All right, our first agenda item. The minutes, we had two meetings worth of minutes from the February 18th. Those were very lengthy, a lot to review, and then also from the March 4th. So let's start with the February 18th. Did anyone have any corrections, changes, anything? That needs to be made for those?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Question, comment, page four, my comment. Probably my fault, but it is exactly what I was intending to say, and I wonder how do I go about that? Do I-
You said page four?
Yeah, page four, one, two, three, third paragraph of the end. "Just as she relies on those who have a traffic degree," she stated, "that growth is inevitable and can mitigate things to make it work rather than stunt the growth." I don't know, that's not exactly what I was going for. I was going for more- I mean, to me, that sounds like the Ed Abbey quote. I'm worried that I sound like the Ed Abbey quote. "Growth for the sake of growth is a mindset of a cancer." I don't want to sound like that. That's not exactly what I was trying to say. I was trying to say, I know it's inevitable. We can't stop it. I'm going to go with the flow, but um- I think, but I was trying to say that I think the, all of us, myself and many people, think traffic studies are to say whether it will work or not work, and that's not the purpose of traffic studies, I've learned. It's the purpose, they've always said it will work, but sometimes they say with these conditions. And can I, can I write a sentence or two that's maybe more direct to what I thought I was trying to say? And turn it in? How does this work?
Yeah, I mean, if that's something, if that's something you want to, want to do, to clarify that, that would be completely fine. For something like that, we might want to bring these back. So that, so the whole commission can, can make sure that they see those, those couple sentences. I know it's weird, but it's procedural.
Procedural. Why not feel bad to hold up the minutes and chew? It's like, I'm gonna come back and- So basically, I come back and say this, and you're like, Lisa, you're an idiot. That's not, nothing close to what you actually said, if that's what you meant.
No, and that's fine. I think that's more than, don't worry about holding up the minutes. The minutes are fine. It's not like we're waiting on something for these. I think every, I think, if I remember correctly. Sorry, just double checking. Yeah, none of these, I don't think, were zone changes. So we're not waiting for these for anything special, so don't worry about holding those up.
Yeah, Lisa, I think that you should have it reflect your thoughts, so I wouldn't worry about, you know, having it be delayed, so.
Sure.
It's not bad earth shattering. I would like to make it reflect my thoughts a little better.
I agree.
Perfect.
In which case, you want to postpone doing them?
Yeah.
At least that's it? Okay, I'll drop my comments off at the office tomorrow.
Okay, that's perfect.
They're mostly just little grammatical things. Periods and commas and he, she's and that kind of stuff, but-
Great.
It's nice to have them read nicely.
Yeah, so we'll postpone the February 18th minutes. What about the March 4th minutes? Were people able to review those? Any corrections, changes?
I have one.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, no, I guess I have two. I mean, they're, they're kind of- They should be written good. Anyway, this one is on page three. One, two, three, the fourth paragraph, which happens to be a comment from me. They kind of have the same comment as, as Lisa did, but- On the third line, there's an extra period after area.
Yes, I noticed that.
I mean, it's just that kind of stuff. The next paragraph down, not Ms. Milkovich, but the one after that. One, two, third line up from the bottom. Drain system will be needed to meet the city's engineering department requirements. So that was it.
Okay. Do you feel like the tone of your comment was okay? You're okay with how it was?
Yeah, they're fine. Yep.
Okay.
What if we just struck the word "be" from that third lineup, Ned? So the drain system will need to meet the city's engineering requirements and just drop the word "be," "be."
Either way.
Yeah, either correction, I think, still.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay.
I'll let them, I'll let Susan figure out which one she wants to do.
Yeah, how to edit that. Okay, that works. Okay, no findings of fact for this bracket, so we'll just go to agenda item number four.
Yeah, hopefully, this will be a pretty quick, short, sweet, to the point. It's just an accessory dwelling unit off Anderson Avenue at 766 West. Just across the street from the junior high. Wait, elementary, let's try that, elementary, sorry. I drove by it today. I drove by both, the elementary, and then I drove, and I saw the junior high, because I was going and looking at the tri-lane.
Yeah, they're just a street lane from each other, right?
Yeah. So this is a .2 acre site with a 3,000 square foot primary residence and a proposed 960 square foot accessory dwelling unit. When he originally, when the applicant originally built the house, he had a walkout basement put in. I have pictures of that in the, in the official PowerPoint. And so now, he's just wanting to turn that into accessory dwelling unit. It is, the 960 square feet is approximately 32% of the total area of, of the, of the home, which is less than 1,000 square feet and less than the 40% that we currently allow. And then there is the two bedrooms. And as you probably saw, there was another bedroom that he fully intends to convert to cold storage, is what he's told me. You can kind of see on the plans, the cold storage next to it. He wants to expand that to allow for additional space there for his cold storage. So it pretty much just follows everything. It meets all the codes and things like that, so are there any questions on this one?
No.
Okay, well, that's easy. So I will say that I checked today, and the ADU bill did get signed by the governor. So I would anticipate seeing something before October 1st.
So what does that mean, Zach?
That means that, for example, this, this particular application, you won't be seeing things like this anymore. Internal ADUs are not a, are not subject to kind of these conditional use permit approvals. They are allowed by right. And we have to, we can still require a permit, and we probably will, but it'll be administrative. Just so that we can still keep an eye on them, still make sure that they're being used for affordable housing solution, as opposed to Airbnbs, things like that.
And follow the, the other rules.
And follow the rules.
However, you won't have to do any notification to neighbors and no public comment. So that should raise a few eyebrows.
And no restrictions on percentage, a square footage, and occupancy, right?
Yeah.
And parking spaces.
We're allowed to regulate, we're allowed to require one parking space. But again, that's going to be an administrative approval, which, I mean, these have pretty much turned into an administrative approval. You guys just make, you guys just hear it, and it's pretty quick.
But still, that they have to be parked off the street. Parking space has to be off the street.
That is correct, yes. We're allowed to require one additional off-street parking space. So, and then, yeah, like Lisa had mentioned. Go ahead.
Oh, no, it's probably the same thing. The state law doesn't necessarily have requirements on number of bedrooms. Like this application, he could have that third bedroom, right?
Yep, yep, he would be allowed to have the third bedroom. We're not allowed to regulate bedroom, the amount of bedrooms or the size, so, yeah.
What's the legality around that, though? If the governor signed today, could he petition and say it was in effect today? Or how, when's the timing?
Actually, the law lays it out. The bill lays it out. I believe it's October 1st. If we don't make our changes. Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at it right now. So if we don't make some of the changes that are required in this bill, it goes into effect on October 1st. There was something else on there that says May 5th, but I'll deal with that. So, yeah.
So does it work retroactively? He could rent out a room now that the state law says that he can do that?
He can't do it through Airbnb.
Well, right, this ADU technically has three bedrooms, right? And once the state law's in effect, he could have the whole place rented out, right?
Yes, yeah, come, come that time, yeah. It's a little, it's a little murky. Pretty much, these conditional use permits will probably just go away. They won't be held to those conditions. But that's, that's, that's more of a legal question that I don't know the answer to, so.
Can I ask another question? And then this is based off what we have to do at school, so I could be completely off. But in the schools, we have a responsibility to inform our consumer of the laws and changes in the laws. So do we have any kind of responsibility to let him know this is changing October 1st?
Well, he's listening, so, so he will probably know.
Right, in the city?
I'm sorry?
Or let all ADUs in the city know, you know, because they had-
Yeah, it might be something-
Had three bedrooms, and they could only use two for, you know, lots of different situations like that.
Yeah, and that might be something that we need to look at and maybe, you know, kind of alert people to. Because, yeah, like, we require like, an affidavit be recorded against the property, all that. I don't think we have to do that anymore. So there's quite a few things that we'll probably have to probably do, and-
Well, and specifically to this, Mr. Chavez's situation, he's gonna have to spend a little bit of money to change or partition that third bedroom off and to sign an affidavit. Maybe he should withhold his item, and then just in October, become a accessory.
Which was my question, Lisa, is all of this retroactive?
It is not retroactive. They, in one of the substitutes, this is, this was the fifth version of this bill. In one of the previous versions, they did have it retroactive to the beginning of the year, but they have since backed off that. So right now, I mean, right now, he would still be held to the same 13 conditions up through October. Come October, or whenever the code changes, there might be- I'll have to look at it a little bit more. I'll probably have to get with the attorney's office to see if we need to, I don't know, like revoke the, the conditional use permit, or, you know, just amend it. Because, I mean, really, it doesn't, I don't think the 13 conditions state the bedroom counts. It's just, it's just part of the code, and that they have to meet the code.
Percentage of the, right, over a certain percentage, and so then-
Right. So, so we just state that they have to meet the, the current code for, yeah, applicable standards outlined in chapter 17.78 of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance. So once that changes, this still is, is in effect. And I anticipate that with our, with my code change, that I'm going to be putting in there that, you know, we, in for internal ADUs, you can have as many bedrooms as you want, blah, 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 you know, the whole spiel, so.
So what do you think about applications that are coming between now and October 1st?
I'm gonna try to probably dissuade them from doing it and say, hey, just, just, you know, don't, don't do it right now, you know?
But I guess if someone had an ADU that met the current requirements, maybe, you know, they only have the space for two rooms, and, and they want to start making money renting it out, it might be worth seven months of rent, just to go ahead. I don't know. There's a lot of variables there, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, these, these conditional use permits cost money, too. They cost 300 bucks just to apply for them. So, you know, I'm gonna, that's usually how I can sell people to just wait until October. So to kind of, you know, let, let things go. But I can tell you, I'm a lot less strict and stringent when, you know, I'm looking through these, and I still have to meet the codes and everything like that, but I know that they'll be changing soon, so.
What about, what does the law say? I know that something that was important in our code was like the interconnectivity of the fire alarms and having like their own, you know, heating system. All that stuff was checked, right?
Yeah, and that, what, I mean, that, there are some, they did change some of the building code for, as part of this. They changed the Utah Building Code. For example, for like egress windows, that was always one of the largest barriers for people to do an ADU, especially in their basement, is that we required them to dig, you know, new window wells and for fire egress. And the building code did amend that, or this bill did amend that, that said, if it was legal when it was built, that's allowed to be as it is. Which is, it was really surprising that that actually made it all the way through. I didn't think it would. But if it was built to code, when, when it was built, then it's allowed to continue, and cities can't require that they put in brand-new windows. Again, it was one of the most cost prohibitive things from people doing an ADU.
Did the HOA bit stick in, the HOAs can't regulate them?
I think so. I think that stayed in, too. That was, that, I live in a multifamily type, I live in a townhome, but that still made me happy, because I, I, I like to slight HOAs when I can, so.
Yep.
Can't believe I just said that in a public meeting. I shouldn't have said that.
I live in an HOA.
And Jared just came in, so, you know, he just, yeah, that's gonna-
I obviously missed the good stuff.
You know, I just, I just say in a public meeting that I like to slight HOAs.
He said it twice.
That is like, not even in the top 10 bad things you've said in public meetings. You're fine.
Is that, is that the PUDs or just HOAs in general, or do I have a preference?
He meant personally, not professionally, right?
Right, right.
Exactly.
And, and to answer that, Jeremy, PUDs, PUDs are a type of development. You can't see me doing my hands, I don't think. But they are a type of development. They are not, PUDs often have an HOA, so that would still apply. The HOAs would not be able to regulate those, so.
Can I ask you?
Does that answer your question, Jeremy?
Yes, it does. I was more asking your personal feelings, but yes, it does.
Right.
Can I ask a quick question? What happened at the city council meeting with the Vine development? On first ward property?
Yeah, it didn't go to city council.
Oh, my bad. I thought it already went. I thought-
Well, it doesn't, it actually doesn't go to the city council. As a design review, you guys are the final entitled, you're the land use authorities, you make, once it's decided, it's done. They're in a building permit right now, so I think they were a building permit last meeting, too. I haven't reviewed it yet, so, but that's on my list of things to do.
Strike two for the night.
Me or Zachary?
Oh, Zach.
I heard the Bullion project is going back on our schedule. Is that right?
April 1st.
Yes. Yep, the notices, all 130 something of them are sitting in the mailbox, ready to go out, so.
Is that spring break?
I don't know. Is it spring break?
Ooh.
It is, it is spring break.
Wow.
I already printed and stuffed them, so no, I'm not changing it.
But I bet the neighborhood, there'll be at least one comment saying it's tricky to do it over spring break, right?
Yep, always.
Well, you better tell me before the end of the night, Jared, because they're sitting in the mailbox.
Yep. My inclination is to say we planned it for the first and produced them all. We're doing it on the first. Will you, let me ask a question, because the, the, how many of you are gonna be around first spring break, April 1st? Because it is the only item on the agenda. So I'm not worried about the neighborhood. Neighborhoods always think, whatever it is, it's, it's Rosh Hashanah, it's, it's somebody's birthday, they think we did it to keep them from knowing it was going on. That, that just happens, but if I don't have a quorum that night, if everyone likely did not have a quorum, then I think we ought to push it off. How many of you, I saw a couple of heads. Ned, you're gone or around?
Around.
Around.
Aren't you gonna tell us we have to be there, because we can be, meet you anywhere, even on spring break now, on the beach?
Yeah, that is true, so.
On a beach.
How many of you are unable to attend and want us to go ahead and have that meeting without you?
I, I think I will be there, but I don't know if I will, and you can have it without me.
I think, I think we'll go forward. We have four that are probably gonna be there, and if we need to, we can get people looped in digitally, and we'll, we'll move forward. It's, you know, it's not like it hasn't had exposure. They've been out to the neighborhood meeting and all of that, too, so we'll, we'll move it on and see what we get, so.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
I have a question. When do we think we may start meeting in person again?
I'm so glad you asked that, because that was one of the things that Melinda wanted us to mention to you. The city council is starting to meet live. They're not having audiences, audiences. They're not having public there live, but the council's meeting live. And they wanted us to ask when you all think you might feel comfortable starting to do that, and getting together live at city hall to broadcast from there, probably at first, and then bringing the public back slowly. What do you think? How many of you feel like you'd be comfortable doing that soon?
I've had both vaccinations, if that helps anybody.
Me, too. I've had one.
Right.
That's my first.
I've had both.
Zero, me, too. Zach was just telling me that the news was out that by the 24th of March, everybody 16 and older is gonna be eligible, so we, do you think that we might be, if we're all vaccinated during March and April, we might have our main meetings back live again? And there's a good chance that people, aside from us, other people, will start getting vaccinated, too, and that we, I don't know, maybe they'll, maybe they'll start to want to have us just have people back live again. We need to consider still broadcasting for a long time, I think, maybe forever, still broadcasting this way, a Zoom, a Zoom meeting, but a Zoom meeting of us all live together, so that people can participate and watch over the feed and over Zoom.
So Jared wants to add to mine. Go ahead, Jared, sorry.
Oh, I, I, at any point, I would be up for in-person meetings.
I would say the first meeting in May. Let's give us time to-
Let's, let's tentatively think about that, then. The first one's in May, and we'll see how close we are to it next time we're together. But Melinda just wanted to get a gauge of how, how much appetite there was for it. I had a, I had a four-hour live workshop with the city council today about what we're working on with the moratorium, and it was actually kind of nice. I'm gonna admit that it was kind of nice to be in, in front of them.
I miss all you people.
Yeah, it's, it's less lonely, the four hours.
It is. My office is just so boring.
Yeah.
Even with Jared right, right here.
We need Christmas tree lights. Ask Susan to help you out with the Christmas tree lights.
A little ambiance.
I completely agree with you guys. I'd rather be in person, but I have to admit, I just got used to this video thing. I went for a run, came back in and just put a shirt on.
Yeah, there you go.
I mean, I have canceled, but they're not appropriate there. But I just got the rhythm of it, where you could do multiple things right before the meeting started.
And, and I haven't, I haven't worn a tie for meetings since this all started. It's been a year since I've had to wear a tie. My shirt's untucked right now, so.
Don't stand up.
I don't think you should have to start wearing a tie.
Yeah, just do it with a tie.
I don't think that's any obligation.
The ghosts of the people who trained me as a planner would haunt me. I'll have to wear a tie for meeting days. It's the only day I wear a tie.
Previous mayors didn't wear ties.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll consider it.
What about the Bolero? He had a Bolero tie.
Oh, yeah.
And the handlebar must have.
Well, thank you, thank you for asking the question. It's very, that's exactly what we needed to know, was how, how, how much appetite there was to get back together and how comfortable everyone would be, so we really appreciate it.
Great. Okay, does anyone have any other questions, or do you want to take a quick two-minute break before the meeting?
I need water, so yes, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna go tuck my shirt in. Thank you all.
Holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public had an opportunity to view this meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's planning commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the planning commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. So we will start our agenda items tonight. We have a pretty light agenda. Our first item of business is the approval of minutes. And we are postponing our approval of minutes for our February 18th meeting for summer revisions. So we will move to our March 4th meeting minutes, and are there any changes or updates, corrections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 4th minute.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the March 4th planning commission meetings, meeting minutes, as written with a few minor edits that we referred to in our pre-meeting.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Hacker. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Milkovich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed to that motion? Okay, motion passes. Item number two, conflict of interest. Do any commissioners have a conflict of interest with the agenda item this evening?
No.
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 Oh, I do not have a conflict of interest either, so. Um, business item number three is the approval of finding of facts. We didn't have a finding of facts for this meeting, so we will move on to our conditional use permit. Jean Chavez applied for a conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit located at 766 West Anderson Avenue. And Zach is the applicant here at the meeting?
Yes.
here at the meeting. Yes. Okay, great. Okay, we'll have a staff report by Mr. Smallwood.
Lost my mute button for a minute. Can you guys all see on my screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, um, yes, this is a request from Jean Chavez for, uh, the construction or an operation of a, an accessory dwelling unit at seven sixty-six West Anderson Avenue. Um, excuse me. Uh, you can see here, uh, the, the latest aerials we have, the house was still being constructed. It's a brand new house. Um, it's right here off Anderson Avenue in the elementary schools just to the south. Uh, this was originally part of, um, a subdivision that you approved recently. And I don't know why I brought it up because I don't remember the name of the subdivision. So Circle A Estates, I think it was. There we go. I remember. Um, it is in the R one eight zone, which, um, uh, our code does allow for accessory dwelling units in all single family zones, subject to obtaining a conditional use permit. So, uh, here I have, uh, the building sketch that was provided by the, uh, applicant. This was kind of when he had his bill, his, his house built. So you can see the, um, uh, the front facade and the, the driveway space for, um, the ADU. Um, the main, the, the whole total square footage of the house is three thousand eleven square feet. And is laid out like this. Um, and it's on a point two acre site, which is about eighty-seven hundred square feet. The proposed ADU, which is on this slide here, is, uh, proposed at nine hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, the, the code allows for up to a thousand square feet or forty percent in the main dwelling, whichever is less. Um, the nine hundred and sixty square feet, uh, amounts to thirty-two percent. So it, it does meet our, uh, standards and, and the zoning ordinance. Um, also I'll go back to this. Uh, you can see this TNP trash, that's temporary trash when they were building the building. But this is now a, uh, driveway here, and he has since poured an additional driveway into the back of the building as well. And you can see that here in these pictures. So, uh, this is the additional concrete pad that goes to the back of the house. This is the front of the house. And then you can see it here on your right hand side. That's the entrance to the ADU, uh, through the walkout basement. So it's pretty, uh, we don't allow short-term rentals in, in accessory dwelling units. Uh, so there is a condition that, um, no Airbnbs, no VR verboes or anything like that would be allowed in, uh, in, in this accessory dwelling unit. Uh, additionally, um, but no separate utility meters. He said that, that's not the intention. This was already built and planned to be kind of operated as, as an accessory dwelling unit. Let's see, just verify everything. All right. So, uh, we are recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, subject to the thirteen conditions that are on the screen. Are there any questions I can answer at this point? Okay, thank you.
Um, okay. Could we have the applicant, um, maybe get unmuted, I guess?
Okay, Mr. Chavez, you should be able to speak.
Okay.
Hello, welcome to our meeting. Thank you for being here. Um, would you state your name and address for the record?
It's Jean Chavez. The address is seven sixty-six Anderson Avenue.
Great. Thank you so much. And have you had a chance to review the conditions of approval, the thirteen conditions?
Ye- yes, we've looked at them.
And will you be able to comply?
Uh, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any additional information that you would like to share for your application?
No, not at this time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Um, I will now open this meeting for public comment regarding this item. Um, if there is anyone that would like to make a public comment, please do so by emailing planningcommission@murrayutah.gov. Or if there's anyone participating in the webinar, um, you can make a co, a live comment by clicking raise your hand button. Um, is there anyone, Zach, that's making a live comment that registered before?
Sorry about that. Um, I, I see that somebody did register. Um, if you're here to make a live comment, could you click the raise hand button?
Okay. If you are going to make a live comment, we ask that you keep your comment to three minutes. And if you have prior to the meeting submitted an email comment, it will be read in the meeting right now. Um, but we ask that you do not make any additional live comments if you've submitted an email comment. So, um, did we receive any emails?
No, we, we, we did not receive any email comments.
Okay. And then if you, anyone would like to make a live comment, please rate, click the raise hand button.
Can probably give it a minute or two, just to see if anything comes in.
Yeah. Okay. What do you think, Zach? Have we got any emails or comments?
Um, Jared, I need to ask your opinion on something.
Shoot.
Um, so we did receive a comment at six thirty-one, but it doesn't pertain to this.
I know the one you mean. Uh, no, that's different. We'll forward that onto the commissioners. As an unrelated, I, I know the one you're talking about. And we actually got another one besides that, just now. But not about either of those things, not about this and not about the other thing that the other email was about. But they're just comments coming to the planning commissioner's email. Um, I don't think they're related. They're not related at all to the meeting, but we'll forward them to you after the meeting. So you have them.
Okay, great. So they're not about this agenda item?
They're not about this agenda.
Okay, great. Well, if we haven't received any emails or live comments about this agenda item, I think that we will close the public comment period. Um, is there any discussion among the commissioners about this item? Questions? Okay. Um, if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, sorry. I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and or operation of accessory dwelling unit at the property address seven sixty-six West Anderson Avenue, subject to conditions one through thirteen.
I'll second it.
Great. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property address seven sixty-six West Anderson Avenue, subject to this thirteen conditions with a second by Commissioner Lowry. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, then we can call for a vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got confused. Was it, was it Commissioner Lowry that seconded or was it?
I, I seconded it, but I don't know if Commissioner Lowry did as well.
I did not.
It was Commissioner Pearson, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I wrote down Jake and then I was like, no, wait, wait, wait.
It was my bad. Thanks, Zach.
That's okay. That's all right. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Pearson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Um, congratulations on your accessory dwelling unit and thank you for being at the planning commission tonight. Our last, is there any other business for us to discuss?
I think we covered most of it, um, in the pre-meeting. Um,
I just, I, I mentioned just, and I'll just be really quick, I promise. I mentioned that we had a meeting with the city council today, a workshop about the general plan. They had requested a, um, an overview of the general plan, how it was adopted, how it works, how we use it when we review, um, proposals to change the general plan or proposals to change zonings, proposals for projects, et cetera. They wanted to kind of understand that all better than they felt like they did. So we went through a, a long and sort of uh, in-depth review of the general plan and how it works. And it really was, was kind of, I'm gonna go ahead and say it was fun for, for me getting it ready and then, and then talking to them this afternoon. Um, and we, we do need to do some, um, land use training as a commission coming up, uh, this year. We're supposed to do yearly trainings. We'll get some of that together and have our own kind of fun session. We might want to talk about general plan. We do have new members. Um, and the general plan can be a little bit of an unfamiliar territory. So that might be kind of fun. So be thinking of things that you're interested in beyond that, that you'd like to have training for. Uh, things that, that you find confusing or particularly troubling or, or anything like that. And we'll start putting that together for the summer. Okay? Uh, so just something to think about. Um, thanks very much.
Okay. Um, if there's no further business, then we can call for a motion to adjourn with the time.
Motion to adjourn at six forty-five?
Anyone want a second?
Second.
It has to be the fastest one on record, right?
We gotta tell Scott, man.
For a couple of years.
Nine minutes, nine minutes. That's the best.
It wasn't quite the record breaker, but it's close.
What? What?
Close.
Was close. Thank you, guys. See you next week.